It's gonna get hard out there. I appreciate everybody coming and we're gonna open it up this morning with Brother Brad Noble, Union Missionary Baptist Church, for prayer this morning.
I want to say to the court, and to the brothers that be here with you today, thank you for the invite. No less I'd rather be today than standing here lifting up the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Your men pray today. Father in heaven, we thank you today for the great love that you have for us. We thank you for the gift of life
Yes.
that you bless us with. Just even as the sun came out today and it's a beautiful sunshine today, we're most thankful that the real sun, the true sun
Oh, yes, oh.
shines in our lives. And we just thank you for that today. Lord, we thank you that we're still living in the country. As troubled as things are, we still live in a country where we're free men, where we can come together and be led as free men. And today, as this important, as this body of leaders, unity members gather together, we pray that, that first and foremost, everything that's said and done, in some way, in some fashion, is said in a way that breaks your honor and glory. We pray today that you would guide our county leaders. Cause just as the Apostle Paul said, and when he said, "Follow him."
Yes, Lord.
Follow Christ. Well, we follow them because they lead us in this county.
Follow them.
And I pray that you would give them a clear focus. I pray that you would give them a determination. I pray that you would just lead God and direct in everything they do. And we do. We pray for our county. Lord, DeNarfa County has struggled, but you've never forsaken.
That's right.
And in that, Lord, we pray you more prosperity in our county. We pray for blessings upon the people in our county. And I pray for our leaders here today. God, I pray that you would just uplift, you would encourage each one, you would keep their eyes on a bigger picture, Lord. And we thank you for the endless and tireless efforts and endeavors that they pursue in looking out with the best interest of this county and its people. So today, Lord, we do pray that you would just bless this meeting.
Yes.
That it was ours. And we think you would have it to go, that you would just lead God and direct in all of it. And at the end of the day, Lord, that all things, as you say it in the word in Romans eight twenty-eight, it does say that all things work together for the good of the Lord.
Of the Lord, and call according to his purpose.
So we pray today that all things in here done in just that manner.
Amen. Yes, Lord.
Indeed, right. So be real here today in this courtroom, in our lives. Lead God and direct here. And for sure, for sure, for sure. Long as you give us a whisper of prayer, we're going to give you the utmost prayer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Lord.
Blessings. Thank you for the son of a woman who crossed so many years ago that we might have lost her. We might have
Yes.
a lot of those. So there will be freedom of that life. We rejoice in that. We give you the thanks, and we can look forward to tomorrow. The name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Lord. Amen. Thank you for a blessing. I do call the order, the court to order. We do have a call and the knowledge and the guests here today, and I appreciate them being here. I do open it up for public hearing. Hearing none, I'll be closing the public hearing. We'll go to consent agenda. And y'all go through that to make sure you see the notes that's on it provided. Y'all have time, look over them. I'll ask the motion. Take the motion. Accept it. Consent agenda. I accept it. Most of my lawyers quiet. The second, Mr. Bissell, we accept the consent agenda. There are no discussions. All papers out. Same sound of hoes. Hearing none. Passion on you now. Number two item is deliberate and consider action on the following items. And number one is we have Mr. Martin Gonzalez. He's with the TexDOT District down in Beaumont, and he's got several people here he wants to recognize for the court today. So anybody that's gonna be presenting anything to the court needs to go up to the microphone so they're bargaining here.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Gonzalez. I'm the district engineer for TexDOT Beaumont District. I oversee the eight counties that brought us the Beaumont District, Newington County being one of those. So good morning, your honor and commissioners. Appreciate y'all having us here. So the reason why I wanted to come and visit with you all is because recently we've had some reorganization changes to our district, and we've shared those changes with you all as far as before, we used to have a Jasper area engineer that oversaw Jasper County, Newton County, and Tyler County, and made the change to have an Orange area office to now would receive Orange County, Jasper County, and Newton County. And so today, I'd like to introduce not only myself, but the major players that you will see and have contact with should you need any information or any issues within the roads within your area. So again, I'm the district engineer. And with me today, I have Sarah DePray. She is our public information officer. So anything that happens within our projects, information, weather events, anything that goes on in the area, she will be the primary contact with all that information out. So status on projects, things of that sort. So Sarah does a great job of keeping everybody informed. So she handles all that for the district. Next to Sarah, I have Roger Ruspar, who is our newly appointed area engineer for Orange County, Orange, Jasper, and Newton. So still gonna have the same, hopefully better even relationship and coordination for partners and information who are other rights in our local contact. Responsible for that communication. So
I know. She's usually pretty responsive.
Anyway, did you get my email? I signed it?
I know.
Okay, sorry.
Whoever's talking, could you mute your voice or please?
So Bryce will be the local one in contact as far as any projects involving TexDOT, any questions with regards to development, driveway permits, and so these things, things of that sort. Bryce Ruspar would be your primary contact for that. Then next to Bryce, we have Cecil Wade, who is our maintenance supervisor for Newton County. And Cecil does a great job in making sure that our roads are maintained and our byways kept clean. So him and this staff are your very first call. If you see any issues within our roadways, Cecil will be the person that you reach out to directly to be able to help you, commissioners. You know, if y'all need any assistance within our roadways, Cecil will assist you with your man. But wanted to take a few moments and just introduce ourselves. That way you can put a face to the name. And if you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer them for you. Like I said, Sarah sent down our new organization for the district and has sent also the current and future projects that are within Newton County. So we just have that available to you all. Our plan is to continue informing you in that way so that if anybody has questions, you'll be able to provide them that information. But thank you again for having us. And that was all I wanted to do this morning.
I would ask Mr. Sarah to, first alone, the information of y'all's contact numbers to my office, and I will distribute it to our commissioners. And that way, put a picture to the phone number, and that way they recognize them. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two, discussing appropriate proven force to maintain Palm Road in Toledo Bend. I think this is the second time this issue has come up. Ms. Madonna Midkell, and if you don't mind, come present your case.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Madonna Midkell. My husband and I have purchased the property on Palm Road, which is in Toledo Village, section six. And all that we are asking is that it be maintained to the same standard as the rest of the subdivision and plum. Partial of plum is already acted. It's been almost a year and a half since we had the property. And I think we had an issue with it was abeasement or a county road. And after I got back with the Mr. O'Quinn, he assured me it was a county road and directed me to the documents at the courthouse. So I got that. And I talked to, who cheered for me a couple of times, and the secretary about five times. I can understand that in the budget, there was not any running for asphalt. I think I gave a twenty dollar packet. And you can see that in my car, I cannot get up that road. We have photo buildings of every town we're calling here. I understand that while we're trying to maintain this road, nobody's living on it. Even though the first three lots were assented, and I'm in the next three lots. But by the pictures, the road was pretty rough. The ditches aren't cleaned out. And so before we move forward, I'm gonna be able to access it. So Commissioner Forney and I espoused, and what would make me happy, as he wanted to know, is for the accident. One of the one reason is a beautiful piece of property in the same subdivision where everything else is assented. I understand it's not in this year's budget, but we need to make a plan, which Mr. Forney did put some, I think it's road base down. And but it's not completed yet because I went to Mr. O'Quinn and asked him one of two, but there's actually four markers there. And the road base goes to the first two, but it doesn't go all the way to the other, which it goes up with the hill. And it's how that works. We've had some really rough weather there and rain. It has not washed. It's held up great. But it's not complete. But that gives us a start so that when we do get a budget, that possibly we can budget in to have that assented at some point. I don't have, we don't have that much experience at this time. And like I said, it's all asphalt. The whole subdivision, asphalt is except our part is not. Why am I here? In one year, my property assessed for two hundred thousand dollars more than we bought. So the property I have is apparently high dollar property. It's at the lake, and I know the property is set this morning. It's not lakefront, okay? But I don't have, I don't have, I found a picture. If you look at the pictures, it's not an exaggeration of the picture. And to be fair, I did put a photo of where he did put the road base down. And it's nice. Don't get me wrong, but you can't get all the way up. And it's a dead end, and there's no turnaround, Larry, whatsoever. I think the last time I was here, I was asked, Monday, you'll be on two fifty-five. I can't go in on two fifty-five because it's too steep of a hill. I went to the Jasper office. They assessed it. And they assessed that it would be too dangerous to go in on two fifty-five. But it still doesn't solve my problem that there's a county road and then you And that's the reason that we're here, just to begin to maintain the road.
I would ask you a question about the turnaround. And I'm looking at the plot in which was recorded in our county clerk's office. And it doesn't provide a turnaround.
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
And I'm not asking for a turnaround. But what I would suggest is we put dead end, no turnaround, because someone's gonna get up to the top of that hill, and they're not gonna have a way to get out of there. I'm already, if you notice, there's a photo, it blocked in. People parked there on that where we can't access our property right now anyway. Someone's like to park there. Like this vehicle here in this other, they parked on that. We don't have any way, I guess, because they're not used to it in a county road. We wouldn't get it. The second photo, our vehicle is not her, that vehicle, but we can walk up that road to get to our property.
Remember that's like, that Blacktop Road?
I'm guessing that what it states here is that we can't, Newton County will maintain all roads forever. I don't know. That was way back in the nineteen
They accepted it.
Nineteen seventy-two. So you would have to tell me your commission.
I'm answering suddenly, didn't Blacktop Road, the county did?
Yeah, over a period of time.
Yeah.
And it ruined my black. I'll be free this.
Ask our whole
She'll see.
Yep.
And I couldn't answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, neither can I answer your question about the plan because it's in a precinct commissioner brief here at Palm East. So you know, what his plans is, how we move forward, how we address this problem would be left up to the commissioner itself. But you know, I'm here to help.
Yes, sir. And the reason I'm here is because I may have protested sign taxes because I was shocked. They went up over forty percent one year for raw land. And I was told by the mayor that I should, that that is a road, and I should come to the county commissioners' board. And that's the only reason that I'm here. It's that reason. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that. And like I said, Mr. Forney has started that. Like, I don't have any reason, so I'm gonna be able to get to my property. My outside property, apple and waterfall, I have access to two lots here. That's great. My interior ones, I do not have access. But if you walk it, or if you're in a car, you can see the photos. It's not maintained, and it just hasn't been cleaned out. But it is a county road.
I'm not trying to start anything. I understand real estate, but you didn't investigate this before you actually bought the property?
It is a county road. So a county road, I would assume that had something on that road because the whole subdivision, I guess, pieces of it's chip, I would say it would be asphalt.
I just wanted to clarify, protest your value.
The value. Exactly. Okay. But I mean, the whole subdivision and partial of Plum Road is maintained. Only my parts aren't maintained. So buying the property in Newton County with a, with a Newton County road, I'm sorry, I assumed it would still be taken care of. And then Mr. O'Quinn, he told me this piece of paper that says that all roads would be maintained. So that when we cut it, you know, him going in and surveying, yes, this is here. So, yes, sir. I'm sorry. We assumed that it wasn't a county road.
So you've talked to your commissioner?
Several times, yes, sir.
Oh, I don't think there's anything the court can do to help you. Anything I can do to help Mr. Palmby move his project, I'd be happy.
Because all commissioners back here signed this piece of paper saying that it would be maintained. I guess that is the reason.
They signed the paper accepting the roads as is, as up to the county standard at that date.
Yes. But that's the reason that I'm here, is I would not have come here if it hadn't been suggested.
You got anything much to add?
Well, I don't.
So is the road gonna be finished, Mr. Forney?
For no how or budget scheme. Sometime, maybe in the near future, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here in front of you and tell you that that road's gonna get asphalted. No, ma'am, I'm not gonna do that.
Is the road base gonna finish doing up here in this market?
I was, I thought my guys took the road base to the white flags of where the survey's gone.
Not the top means they did.
I apologize. I thought they did.
And they put the water flow
Just to let the court know that this road has been undisturbed. That road never was finished to start with over the period of however long that that lake had been put there. I assume since nineteen, when was the lake? Anybody know when the lake was put there?
This was nineteen sixty or sixty-five or something like that. That plum went up to a, it stopped at her, her property now.
And it never was finished developed at all. It was just unclaimed. But it went with that piece of property, but it really wasn't a designated road up to two fifty-five. The guy before that Ms. Midkell bought it from, he called me one day, and I went over there, and we looked at it, and I said, "Yeah, I can do this. This is what my budget permits me to do." And we went ahead and he opened that road up. And thanks to TexDOT, that I put some TexDOT material on it at the time. I have one up there, tried to, we have put some limestone on it to try to get her a little bit better situation to where she can come up there. And as of right now, that's what my budget permits me to do. And I'm not gonna sit here and tell all of you folks that I'm gonna blacktop that road. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that neither.
But are you gonna clean the ditches there for the rest of the
That is a very, up there where there's an action, there's a reaction. Everything that you do uphill goes downhill. Everything. Everybody has water problems at Toledo Bend. There's not a person up there that don't have some type of water issue. Every time that I open ditches up upstream, it makes everybody downstream flood. So what we figured out up there in that position, particular subdivision, if you leave those ditches grassed over and a little bit of stuff, debris and stuff in them, it actually slows the water down before it gets to the end of the road down there, which is going to the lake. Everything, there's probably a fifty or sixty foot elevation difference from her property to the lake. So it's better not to clean the ditches out, dig the ditches out, because then, because, because the gumbo, I know, and I caused myself a ton of trouble over there. I've got every one of those coves stocked up over there now that I'm over trying to contend with. The cause of digging that ditch out, disturbing that gumbo, I would have been better off just leaving it alone. But anyway, I did. I did what I was asked. It caused any problem.
But I didn't ask you.
No, no, you didn't. No, no. So anyway, if you're asking me, am I gonna asphalt that road in the near future? Maybe. I cannot actually.
Will you be able to finish putting
I will go back, I will go back up there.
It's not washed. It's like concrete right now.
Everybody, everybody in Newton County would love to have their road blacktopped. Everybody. I've got about eight or ten roads, I've got about eight or ten miles that need to be asphalted also. So, no, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I'm gonna asphalt that road. No.
Is that a two you can find it in your budget, or is that just for the flat?
That until I can generate some type of grant money or funds to do the other nine miles first.
And how will I know in communication with you that we may be on the list five years, two years from now?
I can't, this job turns over every four years. Every four years, there could be another city commissioner, a new county judge. I got two more years. That's all I can do.
So I guess that's enough that I mean
That's not enough.
Okay, then I would accept that.
But it's not, not something I'm gonna do next week.
Yes, sir. I understand it.
But I understand that you're gonna go back and look, and maybe continuing where
I paid, I paid, I paid Quinn a twelve hundred dollars to go out there and drive me some stakes in the ground.
You wanna know what I paid him to survey?
Makes me no difference. I just paid him twelve hundred dollars. And I went out there, and he drove me some stakes in the ground, and I thought that my crew went to those designated stakes. I could be wrong. I did not go back.
There's a photo in there that shows where it ended, and it shows the four stakes in there as well. And they stopped at, they stopped at two. There's another one. It's partly from here to there. That's a woman's guess. I'm talking to that. It'll be long, but I'll follow.
I appreciate your time.
Thank y'all for listening.
All right. Thank you. Number three is discuss the solid waste in Newton County. And we've got Mr. Mike Wilf on there from Honeywood Sanitation. And he's gonna give us a little bit of information.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I had the privilege to visit all of your transfer sites with Mr. Palmby. And right off the bat, I wanna explain about Honeywood. We are a private company, family owned, about three generations, a family that currently runs it. I'm the general manager. So Honeywood's currently services about forty municipalities in the southeast Texas market, ranging sizes from Ames, Texas, which is four hundred and fifty homes, to Umberton, Dyball, West Orange, a number of other cities, and as far as these two towns. With that said, we looked at the way this county is currently collecting trash for the residents of Newton County and the free drop-off sites scattered around the county. And the first thing we did is assess what would be the cost for us to do all of it or parting. And first, due to the fact of the equipment that is needed to operate the transfer sites, such as backhoes, backdown boxes, going to maintain fields, I don't think us or other companies like ours that is focused on solid waste is really providing for that. The hauling side of it, just based on last year's facts, our haul cost for the county, if we were to do that next year, would be around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So I wanted to preface what So, I wanted to preface what the cost was operating what you currently have now. So, the next step was, what's a solution? How would we provide service for a county that has many rural areas with lack of density, lack of housing, and some infrastructure, and get everybody provided the same amount of service, otherwise weekly trash comes. And I looked at that, and it's very tough, because everything south of the city of Newton is pretty, we pretty much service the majority of that, all the way down to the bottom half of the county. And we do that on a subscription basis, where people call us up, say, hey, you need our service. And we put out a card, we pick them up weekly, I think, we do a fair and decent job, it's a human business, we make mistakes from time to time, but we're responsive and in the business. With that said, if you go from the city of Newton and you go north, that's where we have issues. The fact that the city of Newton does a great job for the city, the city of Newton also reaches outside and does a number of stops outside the city of Newton. And that, there again, that is a business model over the city of Newton. So, they are deriving revenue from that, they're doing a good job, and they've got a good customer base. So, then that leaves the section north of Newton, basically north of Burkittl, on up to Toledo Bend. And that area is what is underserved by competition for other providers. Now, there's a few pickup haulers, stuff like that in select areas, but nothing precise. So, with that said, what is the solution for that? How do we, how do we get folks picked up? And one method, I will tell you that you're kind of in a similar situation as Houston County was about twenty, twenty-five years ago, in which they had portions of the county that they could not get consistent solid waste service. You got the city of Crockett that's right in the middle of Houston County, twenty-four hundred, you know, twenty-four hundred homes. The city provides the service there, but outside of that city, very rural, less populated. And so, the county chose to go with a franchise, in which they would award one contractor based on a bid, the opportunity to just service all, but it was an all or nothing type deal. It wasn't a, you can pick and choose the high-density areas and then leave the others without. It was, if you service one, you service all. This, and it comes across somewhat egregious, and I will be the first to tell you that. County-wide franchises eliminate competition, okay? When you do a franchise and you give it to a hauler, your competition is not on a weekly, daily, monthly basis where, hey, if you do me a good job, you can keep picking up my trash, if you don't, I will get someone else. It comes down to every five years, or every three years, whatever the contract length is, hey, we can bid this thing out again. And I just wanna reiterate that, because that's what a franchise is for the county. But, with that said, when Houston County did that, they held their contractor at the time, which was not us at the time, responsible to pick up everybody in the county, even in rural, densely, or not, very rural, not densely populated areas. And so, they were responsible to give weekly service to those folks. There still are the human issues, we've got rain, we've got dirt roads, roads that are impassable in heavy storms. Those are all challenges that can be overcome. And I believe if you looked at, and I've sent the copy of the contract for Houston County to the judge and show you what the ramifications would be, or what a typical contract would look like. But, in the best interest of the county, to kind of transfer the ability for everybody to get consistent weekly service for trash pickup, that's probably the best scenario I can lay out. Because being like other haulers, and there would be others that might bid on it, there's waste management to the south, public services to the south, and there might be a couple smaller independents to the north that might be able to handle pieces of it. One other thing that would have to be, definitely have to be talked about is, what is the county and the city of Newton going to do? Because you might wanna carve out the city of Newton's current business plan and leave that tent and just franchise the rest of the county. But, what this would do is this, and trash service would be provided on a subscription basis. Otherwise, every residential that chose to have trash service would call up, set up their own account, and they would get billed for that shit. And so, those costs would not be earned, or not be borne by the county, they would be borne by the individual citizens, as opposed to paying for it through property taxes, be paying for it on a retail basis. So, with that said, that would be the franchise. I would, this would be handled typically by an RP or an RSQ, put out, let other folks bid on it. You would get bids based on experience and size and ability. You either see a sections of the county, but most preferable, the biggest thing for your buck or the most economical quote you're going to get would be to have all of the county in one fell swoop. And that's because the size will drive the hardtail companies to look at that. And so, I apologize that I don't have a great plan to solve the county's trash issues. I understand it's, right now, it's a huge burden with the expense of having to move that much waste to the landfill from some of these rural areas. But, the fact is, is that the county right now is doing about the most efficient job they can financially, the equipment and the resources that they have, but it's all based on your county budget. There's nothing to offset that, people aren't paying at the sites. And there again, I would say, when you look at a raw box and/or a compactor box at a transfer site, and you think about what it costs, take about six pickup loads to fill a thirty-yard open top, roughly. And a thirty-yard open, by the time you call it down to waste management and dispose of it, no matter what your rate is, the disposal will still be three, three hundred and fifty dollars. And by the time you pay for fuel, you pay for the truck, you pay for the tractor, there's probably enough two hundred and fifty dollars, whether it be the county, whether it be a private hauler, or whether it be individual. When you get down to it, each one of those pickup truck loads is about a.
Uh, I don't remember exactly what action the court took, but.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, I'm sorry, my phone, this is Constable Wonders, I don't know if I'm up or not. My phone, I couldn't hear you guys until just now.
Yes, sir, your item is up, on the email address, so go ahead, go ahead and explain.
Uh, yes, sir, it was, so in brief, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet for you guys. The email address is, I, my office is in conjunction with the Southeast Texas Export Investigation Task Force. We do seizures, we get seizure funds, and part of this is, we have to get in touch with the office of the Inspector General to get subpoenas to request bank records from folks. Well, I'm having to get the guys that I have working on this task force to get emails sent to my email, because they'll only deliver these encrypted emails to a, a county email address, or law enforcement email address. And it's just a hassle, I've got a lot of stuff going on with my school safety program. It would just be a lot easier to have this administrative duty that I'm putting off on these guys dealt with individually. But, they've got to have a county email address in order for that to happen.
That would be an extra cost, right?
What's that now?
That would be an extra cost?
I, I have no idea, I don't know how that works, I've no idea how the email addresses work whatsoever. That's something that I believe Shannon Ponchi would have to.
Yes, sir, for basic email, that would be four dollars per person.
I'll pay that out of the seizure funds that we're getting. I've got a seizure, well, we'll talk about that on the next item, but I mean, I've got seizure money coming in. So, I mean, if I need to reimburse the county for that, that's fine. I don't ever come to you guys and ask for money, and I don't intend on doing that. So, whatever it costs, we'll cover that, I'm sure, in seizure funds.
Is that per month, Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what would be the security of these emails?
So, by joining onto the exchange for the county, that would come with our security. Now, they would only be allowed to sign in via web apps and on apps on their phone. So, they wouldn't be getting desktop application licenses, which would cost more. But then that started into more of security of their computers and stuff, anyway.
So, it'd be additional cost other than this four dollars?
Four dollars per month, yes, if you, if you went into desktop licenses. Then we need to start looking into antivirus as far as their computers and all of that. But if we just do web application licenses, we bypass some of those risks. And it'll just be four dollars per person per month.
So, would you be all right with that, Mr. Wonders?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine, they just need, whenever we contact these state and federal authorities, they're not gonna send, you know, an encrypted bank record that's been subpoenaed to, you know, bobbyboucher@gmail.com. It's not gonna happen, they've gotta have, you know, so as long as these guys can produce a bona fide government email address, that's perfectly fine, that's all they really need. They can come check it at whatever computer. If Shannon wanted to, if they needed to come to the office to check it on an office computer, and only at an office computer, that would be perfectly fine, we just need to have that bona fide address so that records can be sent, that's all. So that we can start receiving asset share forfeiture and things like that.
If I can say a couple of things, Judge. One of the things that, one of the concerns that I've heard from a few county officials was, you know, external users using official county email. So, you know, do we wanna let non-employees have, you know, county email addresses? So, that's up to y'all to decide. If so, do we wanna come up with a naming convention for those, so they can be identified, in a sense, as, I don't know, precinct four, assistant? I don't know, we could come up with some kind of scheme that they would be third party, in a sense, or contract.
That would, yeah, that would work. I mean, something like, you know, we have Newton County Judge, you know, at CO.Neuneun. I mean, if something they could use like that would be, is that what you're talking about, Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Volunteer, it would still have the CO.Neuneun TX, yes, domain, but just volunteers at, you know. And then the other thing is that I would still need them to go through the cybersecurity training, just because they are checking email, and we don't want them to forward email to you after they've been clicked on some spam and gotten hijacked, you know, so forth. So, anybody that's getting official email needs to go through the cybersecurity training.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And that would have to be done at the courthouse in Newton.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you have any more questions?
Courtney? Give us the law on that, please.
I don't know if we allow them to all to it, I think it's just up to the courts if we're talking, so. But, I think it's good to point out that it's only, that item is only for his department. So, we're not, you know, if there's another department that has volunteers that want one, they would need to come to the house and justify it, so if he's justifying by saying he's got seizure funds to do or whatever, I don't know, I just think, you are learning a can of worms, but it might be something that the court sees fit to do in this given situation.
So, what is the frequency of the shark coming, or is this something, it sound like that it's only a few cases that where he need, those other, if it need to have that access? What is the need frequency, I guess what I'm asking?
I'll say to, I worked with Ginger some on coming up with a, kind of a contract that Deputy Wonders would use if he were approved, that had requirements like, he's responsible for making sure that his person does the training, or he's taking on all the liability and responsibility himself that Wonders is, so if his volunteer is no longer a volunteer with his department, he would be, Wonders himself is gonna be responsible for letting Ginger, letting Shannon, letting anybody that needs to know, my person's not with the department anymore, so I need to like change the password, I need to make sure and do some stuff like that to make sure the person that's not a volunteer anymore doesn't still have access to the county's network. And so, we kind of, the four of us all kind of hammered out some specifics like that that would work, should it be approved, to make sure everybody's okay with any requirements for the cybersecurity plan and the county. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Ginger? We kind of thought through all the different scenarios of, if this were to happen, what problems might we run into? And it all ends up with Wonders taking on all of that responsibility and signing off on it too, that he agrees, his person agrees, I've gotta do my training, I've gotta do all this stuff, and Wonders making sure that that person's held accountable. So, I think he's taking it on as an elected official, that he wants to take on that responsibility.
Yes. Then, you know, if it's gonna be an issue, I mean, we can find another way around it. Do you just leave the law enforcement enterprise portal? I didn't realize that it was this big of an issue. If it is, we can honestly, I can figure another way around it, you know, so. Then, you know, uh, if it's gonna be an issue, I mean, we can find another way around it, uh, if he just leave the law enforcement enterprise portal, I- I didn't realize that it was this big of an issue, uh, if- if it is, we can honestly, uh, I- I can figure another way around it, uh, you know, so, don't make yourself sick over it, for sure.
Well, I look at it from a liberal standpoint, uh, you only be, let- let's say, when you leave office, and if you leave in the next two years, then how we relinquish this authority? And how we make sure we do relinquish this authority? So, uh, I see a little bit of, um, maybe missed communications at the end of this game, in my opinion.
Yeah, you know what, I- I, like I said, I didn't realize that it would be, uh, uh, there was more than, uh, there's more, uh, that needs to be processed, I guess, so, I- I'll go ahead and, if- if we can, maybe table this discussion, uh, after I speak with Courtney a little bit more, and, uh, possibly Ginger, and, uh, see if, uh, a different avenue, uh, because there are alternate avenues, uh, I just thought it would be quicker and easier to go through the county. Uh, I'll go ahead and I don't even, if this is allowed, table the discussion on the email addresses until I speak more with Courtney and Ginger, if that's okay?
Okay, alright, uh, I'll make that motion, we'll table item four, the public discussion.
Thank you, guys.
Much obliged, Mr. White, I got Mr. Pomeroy, we table, uh, item number four, uh, all in favor, say aye? Same sign opposed, here none, passing unanimously. Number five, discussion appropriate, approve the seizure fund account, be open for Newton County Precinct Four Constable Office specifically, and not in conjunction with any other office, to begin seizure fund cases work by the Constable, or deputies in conjunction with S T P C I G Task Force, Mr. Wonders?
Yes, sir, so, like I've said in previous Commissioners' Court meetings, and I've- I've mentioned earlier, uh, we- we do work in conjunction with the task force, it's, uh, we- we work, it's a anti, basically an anti-terrorism task force, we seize, uh, uh, different items, we- we go to the ports, we work in conjunction with Customs, uh, U F Customs and Border Patrol, and, uh, we seize counterfeit merchandise, uh, various different things, we, uh, a- a- a lot of, a lot of things are tried to, or- or, they- they attempt to ship, uh, vehicles, for instance, uh, uh, I think about eighteen Toyota Tundras that we're about to seize, uh, they're trying to get them overseas, you can't get them in Dubai, and they try to do it illegally, and we seize these vehicles, and, um, you know, after court proceedings and whatnot, the- the vehicles either get sold or used for other purposes, things like that. Uh, one of our seizures yielded, uh, I think it was two years ago, six point three million dollars, I believe, and, uh, so, I'm trying to get our agency involved in this region, Port of Beaumont would be one of our big regions, and, uh, so we're talking about the potential for some- some serious, you know, seizure, uh, uh, money coming in. But, the thing with that is, I'm gonna have to have a seizure fund for that, and it's gonna have to be completely, I- I'm one hundred percent liable for the money that goes in there, um, because my name is on it, so that's why I'm requesting this, uh, account.
So this account would be specifically for the Constable Office in- in Deuville?
Yes, sir, Constable's Office Precinct Four, because it's gotta go under, it's- it's gotta go under my name, uh, because I'm the person that's on the task force. And we've got MOUs and- and paperwork and all that stuff that I've- I've, I'm gonna get to Courtney, uh, to show her, you know, all the legitimacy and whatnot, and, uh, whatever else you guys need. But like, right now, I've got a case that we work out of Harris County, uh, and, uh, I've got a four thousand dollar check waiting, uh, uh, not- not waiting on me to get a seizure fund, but that there's some other things going through, that's a process, so, uh, but just, you know, things of that nature that are gonna be coming in.
So it's not, according to this normal procedure in which, uh, one person operates its own seizure?
So with the other, with the other law enforcement agencies, the PD, the Sheriff's Office, uh, DPS, um, Gay Boys, everybody else, I have a bank account that's my own bank account. And so, if the sheriff goes out and seizes five hundred dollars in cash, let's say, for example, his deputy within the next business day will bring it to me, we count it together, make sure that we have the same account, I put it in my bank account, and I keep the money there, we can file the proceedings in court, and once the case is disposed of, whether it be through a trial or a decaf judgment, at that point, I write a check to Newton County, to Ginger, and they disperse it into the bank account. I tell them which percentage, if we either split it seventy thirty, Sheriff's Office gets seventy, and I get thirty, or if it's disputed and it takes a trial in discovery and much, much more work, it's fifty fifty. And so, then, we have separate fund numbers within general funds that we have the money in, that we spend it out of. And, so, I'm the only one with an actual bank account for that, the Sheriff's Office to own the PD then, um, because I have horrible money in trust until the case is disposed of. So, I don't really wonder if you're asking for a separate fund number for dispersal?
Yes, so, so, yeah, that- that would work for- for any, um, anything inside the county, but we're talking, what I'm talking about is cases that are worked outside of the county, we have statewide jurisdiction, uh, on felony cases, and so, these cases, like the- like the four thousand dollars that'll be coming in here pretty soon, the case has already been settled and everything, it's just a seizure, uh, asset, asset share through Harris County District Attorney's Office, uh, my portion of the seizure funds, uh-
Okay, so, Harris County Office, uh, did that handle that seizure?
Correct.
Or would a prosecuting agency handle that seizure?
What's that now?
Which prosecuting agency handled the seizure, did Harris County DA's office?
Yeah, correct.
So then, they cut you, your portion of it was four thousand, right? So that was, your portion of it needs to go to Ginger to be deposited in the general fund, but you need your own fund number set up so that you can spend out of that fund, but it still goes to our general treasury, um, with our treasurer's office, is that right?
Okay, okay.
Or you have a fund number where you collect fees, you can deposit it into that fund number, but either way, your portion of it still goes to the county to be held, only you're the only one that can spend out of it, and you'll do a reporting each year, actually through this time of year, after September first, through the end of October, where you, the courthouse consent, but you're the only one that can spend it, but it still goes to the treasurer's office, and-
Okay, okay, that, yeah.
Uh, if the auditor's office sends me a report of any consent, or I have my own, um, you know, a document, statement, they'll send it to me, and so, but it's still, your portion still goes to the treasurer.
Okay, okay, yeah, and maybe that wasn't, that wasn't, uh, necessarily, uh, he- he, the- the guy from the DA's office in Harris County, he didn't explain it to me fully, he just said that something to where I'm accountable for it, that's all that- that they care about, is whenever it goes in, there's, like what you were saying, I guess, a- a fund number or something like that, that where it shows that I am accountable for it. So when they ask, hey, where's this money, I can say, look, it's right here, okay, what have you spent out of this, I can say, I've spent this, this, and this, as long as, that's all they said that I've- I've gotta be able to prove and show them if- if they audit-
So just give it, you just need to write a letter to Ginger that explains which fund number you would like it and how you received it, for her accounting purposes, give it to her, she'll put it in, and she'll, you can spend it from that fund number too. So if you bought a TV, you still turn in a requisition the same way to the auditor's office, and you put that fund number, so it's spent out of that account. And then, as far as if it's a new seizure, I'll be able to money, and I'll still make sure you get your portion instead of writing you a check, what Harris County, I'll give it to Ginger, and I'll give you a copy, and it gets dispersed like that.
Right, okay, okay, alright, well, that works out great, then.
Okay, then, we, uh, we no action to call out?
Right, right, yeah, everything's been made clear to me, I- I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, no action to be took on number five. Alright, we'll move to number six, authorized and goodman last minute strong to advertise material bid for drainage mitigation. Uh, County Road ten fifty eight and County Road twenty forty three, T D M A C M G F P, uh, D R four three three two dash eight one eight five, Texas, Mr. Nick.
Morning, morning, morning. Uh, as suggested, is to go out for bids, material purchase only, on, to work on these two county roads in state, County Road ten forty three and County Road twenty fifty eight. The county will then be doing, materials that we deliver, county will do, will perform the, the material in place, new culverts and, uh, lots of base, distinct counties.
Much obliged, Mr. Pomeroy, and second, Mr. Thompson, that we, uh, advertise a bid for drainage mitigation projects, uh, County Road ten fifty eight and County Road twenty forty three, uh, in discussions, not all in favor, say aye? Same sign opposed, here none, passing unanimously. Thank you, Nick. Number seven, discuss and consider take action as necessary concerning the approval of twenty twenty sixteen flood buyout program, that's eighteen dash five three three dash zero 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 dash B two seven seven, and, uh, twenty seventeen Harrison, uh, Harvey Buyout Contract, uh, twenty dash oh six six, dash oh fifteen, dash C one oh eight, and I think it was, uh, capped at two hundred and fifty thousand, and, uh, I think you're asking to maybe up that, Mr. Mark?
Yes, sir. Chris, Chris, let's go to the all of the council.
Some of the guidelines were originally, uh, written, uh, the GLO did ask the county to, to put, to place a cap, uh, how much they would pay for each house, how much possible, and, um, during discussions, and I'm sure two hundred and fifty thousand was about there, um, because they did give a lot of other guidance that we thought that would be enough, and it's time to, to pretty much cover everybody who's interested. But if you'll remember last month, we came back, and, uh, there was just a crazy housing market this year, we've seen some pretty dramatic increases in property values, and so, uh, you, uh, chose to amend the guidelines so that we could do a pre-flood fair market value and a current fair market value, because it was kind of, with these increases, it was almost, um, it definitely, it was more beneficial for the athletes to get a current fair market value these days, because the property values hasn't changed that much. Um, so with that, with the increases, we also, uh, thought it would be, I think, I just go ahead and raise the caps, um, and- and this time, the- the GLO gave a little bit more guidance, and they went with the twenty-two Federal Housing Administration, um, mortgage limits for a single big house, and so, you know, that- that seems like a pretty huge jump, but at the same time, that is, that's- that's where that, you know, that was the sixty million dollars came from, and that way, we don't have to keep coming back, you know, for some reason, the housing market continues to like this.
So we already got a couple houses that, uh, as probably would be over and beyond that, uh, maximum, was the old maximum, and so, does it have to be a new appraisal though?
Well, so, now we, so we have done, since, so since last month, when we approved this, this, doing the current and pre-market, um, we did have a couple of appraisals that came back, you know, over that two hundred fifty thousand dollar cap, for the, the current fair market value, so, if- if we left them in that cap, and that's all that we would be able to offer them, is two hundred fifty thousand, but, you know, because their property values had increased so much, they are over the cap, according to the appraisals.
So what- what happens to the people that we've already bought out, now they see that we've changed our guidelines, and are they gonna come back and say, hey, uh, wanna any up some more, or?
Well, well, fortunately, and I- I did consider that, but we did not have anybody that was even close to that two hundred fifty thousand, as far as, is what they were offering, we did not have to cut anybody off of that cap up to this, up to this, so that should not ever affect them.
Oh, that's just, that shouldn't affect us down the road. Y'all got any question? You must have presented well, I have no questions.
I'll make that move.
One second.
Much obliged, Mr. Pomeroy, and we second, Mr. White, that, uh, we increased the, uh, cap, uh, as identified through the Federal Housing Administration, any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye? Same sign opposed, here none, passing unanimously. Number eight, discuss and properly approve the budget amendment for a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for, uh, uh, zero two three two, uh, Commissioner's special, and he wants to change, uh, several of those fund numbers, uh, to different expenses, Mr. White?
Okay, so we are in the process of our budgeting, and, uh, last year this time, we had somewhat of a moving target on my building, and, uh, it came out that, uh, I'm short a hundred and twenty thousand, right at a hundred and over, a hundred and twenty, uh, as far as, uh, remaining to get back to, uh, to level zero on my, uh, budget. And so, going into, going all, we, uh, the auditor and I have been, uh, discussing how we can, uh, get all that resolved, so that we're gonna be dealing with real numbers whenever, during our budget, uh, period. Uh, but it's showing there that, uh, five seventy-four, I did, the- the bottom line is that I had received, uh, uh, several grant refunds last, uh, just paid this year from big projects, and, uh, uh, last year, I knew I had several projects, so I bit it low on my, uh, on my material, road material, because I had, uh, about three different projects going that were going to complete roads, and so I knew I didn't need as much as normal. So anyhow, that, uh, thirty thousand is to, uh, replace my road, uh, material fund that I had budgeted last year, I used it on projects, and so, replacing it back. Uh, as far as that third one there, uh, the increase on utilities, uh, we know that we, uh, the court made the decision that we were gonna move the, uh, JP then off in the same building with us, so, their utility bills should go away, and, uh, it's added more mess to mine, so, we got a two thousand dollar, uh, increase for the, uh, for the utilities. I think we've, uh, already exceeded the old, the old budget that we had for last year because of that fact. Uh, the last one there is, uh, we had major increases on- on diesel fuel and gasoline this year, and, and, uh, I had money and funds, like I said, in- in the, uh, Commissioner's special, so that I can finish out the year with my, uh, fuel, so that's what this is.
Just a little concern about the, uh, utilities, uh, I know they moved in a couple months ago, and, uh, I'm sure that we paid those utilities for the JP?
We, I am paying it now, because it's all coming through one meter.
Yeah, but did- did she budget it for the rest of the year, now they're, uh, part going to, you're having to pay them, so I'm just saying, uh, could she use part of hers out of her budget to help you with some of your utility expense?
Yes, we gonna, uh, we gonna- Yes, we gonna, we gonna, I understand.
She's done a bit of building expenses on utilities on us, because they're, they're department, huh? He's just writing on his other budgeting utilities, and so they have 30,000 dollars to cover his part of the utility, that's what I'm trying to do. But she has half hers covered under her. We take a portion of hers, kind of that utility deal, and charge them for it. We do the same thing for, for day and, and, and all of a sudden, also.
This money coming out of your cash?
Yes.
Yes. It all come out of this cash, just for the question. It all come out of this.
No, it was already budgeted for. Well, send us a half of that.
You tend to have 120,000 to finish out my building, and so, and then 30,000 to cover what you said, and here it was, it was coming out.
I don't understand that.
And you have Scotty dying in your percentage, right?
I cannot understand that. Coming out with the cash.
Yes.
To finish his building and to, for, that's road materials and utility run, and shield and utility, and fuel and utility run. Should that really come out of your cash?
It's kind of, I was great, I was over the 300, I mean, yeah, I think, like, that's even yours.
Rent refund.
I guess it's okay, they're coming out of that.
Well, it was placed in there to replace my, all these, these. Just like we've done on all the rest of our grants, we have to pay them upfront, and they refund us, and they put it back in this.
They're gonna get your refund in some of it?
Yes, that's what this is. They put it all back in my, in my, in my Commissioner's special. And so we allocating it now back to where it needs to go.
Okay.
I make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, Mr. Palmer and second, Mr. Thompson, will approve the budget amendment for $167,000 for, for those different fund items. Any discussion? Not all favors, say I. Same sign opposed. Here none, passing unanimously. Number nine, discuss appropriate, leave, approve the limited Texas district retirement system. And we're gonna leave it at 8.67%. Go ahead, Mr. Junior.
This is just the annual one that we do each year, and we're above the required rate that TCO, DRS offices. And we, it's 8.67%, and I just wanted to leave it at that for this year.
I make that motion.
Second.
Much appreciated, Mr. Palmer and second, Mr. White, we approve, believe, the 8.67% in the requirement plan system. Any more discussion? Not all favors, say I. Same sign opposed. Here none, ununited. Number 10, authorize approval of order of election on November the 8th, 2022, general election. Ms. K K.
This is just a standard order of election for the governor. The governor, he always gonna sit first, but he always gets on the top of the table. You don't need to go ahead and order that election. Not provided that order with, based on.
Hear the motion.
I make that motion.
Much appreciated, Mr. Benson and second, Mr. Palmer, we order the election for November the 8th, 2022 for the general election. Any discussion? Not all favors, say I. Same sign opposed. Here none, ununited. Number 11, discuss appropriate approved polling locations and branch early voting for November the 8th, 2022, general election.
Basically, it's gonna be the same thing as we've always done at our early voting, it's the end of all this. First day, we'll be out November 24th, and the last day will be November 4th. We will look out for the age to, uh, we are going to do early voting dates for the same, early voting review deal, same, uh, it's real. They have to be open, same, uh, hours, just regular office. We, I've got every single polling location that we have listed. So I'm not claiming on not having anyone, you'll have to go some ways. All votes will be open. I'll let you say it.
Thank you.
I, I see you, you got a guest on here, but you don't have a location yet? But we are gonna have one again.
Well, we're gonna work on this.
Make that motion.
Here, second. Hey, we're gonna drop that ball. Gonna make it up. Yes.
A second.
Much appreciated, Mr. Palmer and second, Mr. White, we approve the polling locations for the November 8th, 2020, general election. Any discussion? Not all favors, say I. Same sign opposed. Here none, ununited. Number 12 is approve to appoint election judges and elected judges for 2022 and 23.
These are basically, for the most part, the same people that always worked. I don't have anyone that's on this that I've submitted to you on that is brand new, that's never won before.
Do you ever have any input from the, the chairman of each party?
They do on occasion, yes, sir. They will recommend.
Are they made aware?
Yes, sir.
Hear a motion?
Make that motion.
I second.
Much appreciated, Mr. White and second, Mr. Benson, will approve election judges and elected judges for 2022 and 23. Any discussion? Not all favors, say I. Same sign opposed. Here none, unanimously, ununited. Number 13, discuss appropriate approve deputy county clerk Angel Clark, carry over 13 vacation days past her anniversary date. Ms. K K.
Yes, sir. She currently has 104 vacation hours, which equals out to 13 days. She has 216 hours of comp. We have been.
201.
216 hours of comp. And we are just now getting started on this election. She is the assistant election administrator. I have to designate someone in my office to hold that position that she does, because she runs the machine who does the reports. Her anniversary day is September 21st, and she will get 15 more vacation days. We are asking to just give us a little bit more time. We're gonna try to get some of this vacation comp, not any. But with the election coming up, we just, we don't see it happening right now.
And our policy says? Both way can be carried over as an operation for the court.
She can carry over five days without us having to do this for three months after her anniversary, but then, you know, we try a little to get that in. But she's gonna have to go to four or five days. So we're just asking to, if she doesn't have a vacation.
What's the action of the court? It's not gonna carry over to next year.
No, it's not my plan for her to do that. It's just gonna go past her anniversary, and just maybe a little more time before the five days.
If I'm not mistaken, like I, this is just additional hours that she has over her four days on that period. These are additional days, and that's what she's going.
You're gonna try not to sum that up too, because the election coming up is, is new.
I make that motion.
We just talked about vacation right now. One second.
Much appreciated, Mr. Palmer and second, Mr. White, will approve the deputy Angel Clark, carry over 13 vacation days past anniversary date. I would also ask y'all to put in there that this will not be passed, passed December 31st, 2022. Any more discussion? Not all favors, say I. Same sign opposed. Here none, ununited. Ms. K K, can I ask a question right here? I was intending to do it back up there. I understand we have a lot of voting machines that's been here for some years. I understand that they are recalibrated probably every year, and why aren't they ever used?
People just don't use them. They're available, they don't use them, and in fact, there'd be a service running, it's a city. I think after the big election where there was so much oil in 2020, everybody was really afraid of, even, even my, in 650, which actually all it does is counter ballots. We do not, you know, county have a machine that has memory. When you program the automatics, all it does is put the formats of the ballot in there. You actually have to put your ballot in there and scan the ballot and then pull it up on the blue screen. And all that machine is, is a big mistake. It does not have memory or anything.
So, so these machines were produced through a grant, right?
Yes.
And do we still answer for this grant?
The grant that has been, yeah, it's been 18 years ago.
So is there expense? You said that they would be calibrated or re-certified that they, so is there expense to the count?
It's part of the service agreement, and it's part of the 650.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Okay, we'll go, move on to 14, discuss appropriate set of the sheriff and constable fee for 2023 and report set fees to the state comptroller public account. Uh, Ms. K K.
That is something that we are required to do in, I am not aware. I've kind of looked at the fees and everything. I compared them with Jasper Henry's. I didn't see what we might need to increase anything, but the sheriff's not here. That might also appear, is there anything that you're aware that might need to be increased in the fee?
As far as increases, I'm not, I don't, I would compare it to our, the service fee.
We're comparable with counties our size and surrounding.
What'd you say it was? What'd you say it was, sir?
$150 service fee. Most of the counties, around around 75 to 100.
What do you call them, service fee?
Uh, just, just general services of, uh, you can relate that, I can't remember.
Yeah, this law claims is 150 and justice, 150. And all of it.
Okay. 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 Yeah.
And I just want to mention we're preparing this, just making all those kinds of things.
We looked at these fees a couple of years ago, did make some major changes to increase to our surrounding counties. So I haven't looked at them this year.
We're still, we're still, I went on, at the comptroller, that side, I was, uh, can we speak? And we're, we're still, we're willing to be.
The reason I asked, I thought I had several departments, probably, you know, for, for, I don't know what it is. Quite a high looking office, they have, you know, I definitely looked at the county version around the, so they are, so.
All right. Hear a motion?
I make that motion.
Much appreciated, Mr. Benson and second, Mr. White, that we set the, uh, fees for you, uh, sheriff and the constable fees for the same as last year. And so we can be reported to the Texas comptroller public account. Any discussion? Not all favors, say I. Same sign opposed. Here none, ununited. Number 15, discuss appropriate approved resolution submitting grant application for the bullet resistant shield grant program for, to the office of the governor. Ms. Lewis, there you are.
This is a grant that the sheriff and I, I worked on, he asked me to, to apply the application. Because we, the office of the governor, public safety office, made a bullet resistant shield. And the reason he wanted to do this is with some of the security programs they have at schools, this is gonna help them. I forgot to write down how many we were doing, I believe it's five shields, and he's already got the training, signed up. But when we get up, I think of all. But when we get up, I think the officers have to go through a certain training to be able to do this. Uh, the total of the grant is twenty-six thousand forty dollars and there is no match. It's fully funded by the Office of the Governor. And this is just a resolution that we have to have, saying that the court approves us to the grant. That any funds that we don't use has to be returned back, but they'll, they all, they will all be used. We've already got the quotes and everything.
Make that motion.
I second. Most of you may have noticed, Mr. White, Second Mr. Benson, will approve the resolutions uh, submitted to the middle of the grant application, the bullet resistant shield program to the governor of Texas, officer of the governor. Any more discussion? Not all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass on unanimous. Number sixteen, discuss will approve, uh, Newton County summary procedure of handling substantial damage, substantial improvements. Liz?
This is required of the county floodplain office to have these procedures in place. I've been working with FEMA and the Texas Water Department, we're in the floodplain part of that. And it is something that we should have had in place. They've been working with me on it so we can get it going. This is, uh, into a summary of the procedures that have to be done in the time of disaster or flooding or anything like that that we have to go out and do substantial damage assessments. Because we have to have record of all of that. And this is the summary procedure that's required.
I make that motion.
Mr. Thompson, say it.
Yes.
Most of you may have noticed, Fomby, Second Mr. Thompson, will approve the Newton County summary procedure of hand, handling substantial damages and substantial improvements. Any more discussion? Not all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass. Number seventeen, discussing appropriate approve Newton County substantial damage plan and damage assessment handbook.
This is, uh, on the same wavelength as the satellite, this is another thing that's required by FEMA. It's an actual, explains what happens, what has to be done. We have to do a substantial damage assessment. And it also includes handling the things step by step on what has to be done. And it has to be approved, so it is required for the floodplain.
Make that motion. Second.
You may just move.
Required, that's required.
Most of you may have noticed, Mr. White, Second Mr. Benson, will approve Newton County substantial damage plan and damage assessment handbook. Any discussion? Not all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, unanimous. Number eighteen, discussing appropriate approve grant agreement with Texas dot for routine airport maintenance program, which is known as the ramp on twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
This is an annual grant program with Texas. And this is just a renewal for the upcoming, this is the end.
I make that motion.
Most of you may have noticed, Fomby and Second Mr. Thompson, will approve the grant agreement, Texas dot for routine airport maintenance program, uh, for two twenty-two and twenty-three. Uh, any questions? Any discussion? Here, uh, none, so we, all the papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass. Number nineteen, discussing appropriate approve bids selection committee recommendation for RFQ twenty twenty-two uh, GLG zero six engineering services for DevCOG and CDBG litigation fund.
GLS copy of the score sheets.
Yeah, I got it on mine.
Okay.
Need Elizabeth almost, Mr. Thompson, you got it, you got it, you got it? Got yours, Karen?
Yeah, I got mine on mine. Have it, thank you.
Judge Dan, this is for the DevCOG CDBG litigation funding. Um, we have a trade association that's been recently procured for grant administration. And I'm going to do the engineering procurement. We received five submittals. We had Arson of Wilson and Cole, Centerline, Goodwood Lax, that are from, uh, SBI, which is Schwanberg, and then other ones, TLC Engineering. We scored GL, uh, Human Laxers scored first with average score ninety-five, one thirty-three. Arson of Wilson and Cole came in second, ninety-seven. And then, um, SBI was third, TLC was fourth, Centerline was fifth. And Centerline scored lower, because they were, I think they were out in West Texas, but they've never done any work in our area. And they had a few other little things that, you know, because we have a long, long seat or a long list and stuff we have to go through and look at. It seemed like a good company, but they just didn't have the experience that we were looking for. And we were doing, and he also said, anyway, uh, the bidding committee was Mike Lewis, myself, and me. And we were trying to make a good response.
That's the one we normally use anyway.
Second.
Most of you may have noticed, Ms. Thompson, Second Mr. Benson, will approve GLS for the, uh, litigation funding or engineer, uh, for the RFQ twenty twenty-two G zero six. Uh, any discussion? Not all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass. Number twenty, discussing appropriate approved procedure moving forward with allocation of funds under ARCA program. Mr. Taylor?
Okay, Judge, Mr. Stevens. As you recall last time, Mr.'s court authorized taking your ARCA funds and putting them in the lost revenue category. I'd like to visit with y'all a little bit more today concerning the ARCA funds. So you take the ARCA funds, put them in the lost revenue bucket. Now how do you go out and take them out of there? There's some things we need to look at, some things we need to keep in mind. Excuse me, with the ARCA funds, first of all, everybody needs to fully understand these funds maintain their identity until they're ultimately spent. So what does that mean? That means the treasury is gonna expect you to monitor these funds, to keep track of it until that check is finally cut, the money is expended. So some of the things we're gonna be looking at with these funds, one is transparency. We want to make sure everybody is aware of what happens with these funds, where they're going. Second thing, we want to make sure it's an eligible expenditure that these funds are being utilized from. We want to make sure that the supporting documentation is in the file to substantiate this expenditure. And if it's an expenditure that triggers procurement, that's a, that's a big nasty word that I thought about the other time. Once again, keep in mind, these are federal funds, they have to comply with federal procurement policies. So we want to make sure that these funds comply with all the procurement procedures. In other words, we're gonna make sure all the highs are dotted and all the t's are crossed. All right, so as far as expending these funds, who's the one that determines how these funds are spent? Y'all, exactly. What we do is however y'all want to spend them, we take the information that's provided to us, we run it against these things that we just discussed. We make sure it's an eligible expenditure and then we bring it back to the commissioners. Either for a discussion, a work group session, or to be presented in Commissioner's court for expenditure. Doesn't all have to be done at once. You can allocate the entire budget at once, you can do it if you see fit, unless the budget need to go out the door. The first form that I provided y'all, it is a form that we created. We use this form, we've used it in several counties and municipalities we're currently assisting. It's a pretty well-planned, simple form, gives us the information we need to start the determination of is it an eligible expenditure, what's involving getting this money out the door? If it involves a procurement, what type of procurement has to take place in conjunction with these funds? So this form will be completed, it would be submitted to us, hopefully by one individual here in the county. That way we, we, there's one person we can turn to to ask about the knowledge. If you'll notice on the form, it also has the name and the information of the individual requesting these funds. So if we need any information to make a determination, we can reach back to that individual. We do request that provide, you know, supporting information that they can along with this to kind of help us along with it. Once again, once we make that determination, either they're eligible or ineligible, we'll get back with Commissioner's court at the pleasure of the court. We will put it, either put it on the agenda or put it in a workshop as far as requests that have been made. If it's not eligible, we'll take it, while that's what you're requesting, not a eligible request. Once again, that helps us to track along with the county. Helps us to ensure that we got all of our eyes dotted and the t's crossed. The second page I provided you is basically just a flow chart of how, we'd like to see this process made place. And if you'll notice on there, there are two blanks on there. Once again, that's basically due with the county, if y'all decide it's gonna be one person, who do we live to be sending these requests to? And the second one is, who do we send these requests back to after we've made a determination? All right, I know that's a lot, I threw that out there and I heard, I know y'all have a long agenda. But I've been left any, any questions, y'all may have to thank each other. If that adds to that bill, y'all just wait and get on down the road.
He's confused, everybody who explained it very well.
One or the other.
One of the counties. That's all we need.
Okay, here a motion.
I make that motion.
Most of you may have noticed, Mr. Fomby and Second Mr. Thompson, we approve the procedure moving forward with the allocation of the fund of the ARCA program. Any discussion? Not all.
As part of your procedure, does it make you your personal lead that will send it to Mark? As part of your procedure, whether it be your office or who, I was looking at the whole procedure.
We, in our procedure, we will approve the procedure and select somebody at the next court. Uh, any more discussion? Not all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, number twenty-one, is discussing appropriate approving accept the twenty twenty-two Newton County Commissioner Annual Report, Road Report for Precinct One, Two, Three, and Four. Uh, I think y'all have provided that through my office. Uh, I think everybody has approved it and it just has to be approved through the court.
I'm good with mine.
I make that motion.
Most of you may have noticed, Mr. Benson, and Second Mr. Thompson, that we approve and accept the twenty twenty-two Newton County Commissioner Annual Report for Precinct One, Two, Three, and Four. Any discussion? Not all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass. Number twenty-two, discussing appropriate approve twenty twenty-two Texas Road Mileage Certification. And that is also in your packet and, uh, I've done, I had the exact, the total miles at five hundred and five hundred and sixty-six point seven three seven. Five hundred and sixty-six point seven three seven miles of minus road. I hear a motion. Motion, Mr. Fomby, Second Mr. Thompson, will approve the twenty twenty-two Texas Road Mileage, uh, Certification. Any more discussion? Not, all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass. Uh, number twenty-three, to approve the repealment of Roger Frussell as President Board, uh, the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District. He's been on there several years and, uh, this term will run from January twenty twenty-three through December twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I make that motion.
Most of you may have noticed, Mr. Fomby and Second Mr. Thompson, we reappoint Roger Frussell as President Officer and the Board of the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District. Uh, any more discussion? Not all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass. Number twenty-four, is to reappoint Ole Levine as Director representing Newton County as Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District Board. Uh, he is also run from, uh, January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I make that motion.
Your second?
Second.
Most of you may have noticed, Mr. Benson, Second Mr. Fomby, that, uh, we reappoint Ole Levine as Director for Newton County representing, uh, Newton County for Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District Board. Any more discussion? Not all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass. Number twenty-five, discussing appropriate extend the Hurricane Laurel Disaster Declaration. Also lump in, uh, the COVID nineteen declaration, same, and we'll move it extended to October eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
I make that motion. Second.
Most of you may have noticed, Mr. White, Second Mr. Benson, that we extend the Hurricane Laurel and COVID nineteen declaration to October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Any more discussion? Not all papers say aye. Same sign of pose, here none, pass. Number twenty-seven, discussing possibly take action with Newton County Historical Commission Empowerie Time dispute. And this is a, uh, item that was brought to my attention that needs to be addressed by the Court of Newton County. And at this time, we'll be going to executive session and it's authorized under government code of five 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 point oh seven one A two regarding the litigations or five five one point oh seven four regarding personal matters and property acquisitions. So at this time, we'll be adjourned to a executive session and we will be calling y'all back out as soon as, uh, we have this discussion. And we'll be calling y'all in as needed, if we need y'all.
I just, I just wanted to say that I wanted to address the board and just make sure they knew I was an employee. And that I wanted to just make.
Son of a bitch.
Stand up, we're back on.
All right, give me one second.
Okay.
All right, you ready to go?
Okay, thank you. We're back in regular session three minutes after one and I think there has been a decision made on item number 27 and I'm going to read what was recommended by the executive session and it is to be, Mr. Terry Woods will be paid out for 240 hours of the maximum allowed cop time which is an amount of $5,282.40 and it'll be paid out of from the judge's office in our part my part-time help and the second part of it is take off immediately for the rest of the hours that was accumulated during this time. So I hear a motion to that effect.
Come in at, come in at mile again.
Here a second.
I second.
Motion to be made, Mr. Thompson, second Mr. Benson, that we approve this motion as read. Is any discussion? No, all personally I. Same sign opposed. Here none pass. I hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Here a second.
Second.
Motion to be made, Mr. Thompson, second Mr. White, with adjourned. I admit second one.
Yeah, there's a lot besides. All right, so.